Want to thank each and everyone for gathering with us this evening. Moves us down to recognition as well as public forum. We have three individuals that have signed up with us this evening. Neil McMillan, Facility Assessment, and Karen Robinson. Facility Assessment. And then we have Latonya, Air Force School Practice. So we have two individuals that have signed up for the same topic. You will be allowed to share that five minute time. And then we will then move down to Latonya for school practice. At this time, Mr. McMillan and Ms. Robinson, have y'all want to split your time of the five minutes?
Hey, good evening Superintendent, members of the board. My name is Neil McMillan. Recently moved into the area about five years ago and participated in youth sports. I have two children here in the area. Both have moved on from Stover, both a freshman at Ellie High School. One's a senior, I'm actually missing an event tonight to be here with you guys. And one's a freshman that played football last year. So having said that, I had a bunch of spare time. Twenty-five-year veteran from the Army. Ten years a special agent with DCSA, Defense Counterintelligence Special. This Defense Counterintelligence and Security Agency out of DC. So when I moved here, my wife and I both retired military. So she told me I need to do something with my time. So therefore, I started a youth league here in the county. We played two years with the Recreation Department, great league. However, didn't have any postseason, which was the basis for me starting the youth league to travel. However, so just to address a few things that we ran into with some issues being in the county in front of me. KCSD currently assesses a rate of two fifty per hour with mandatory minimum of four hours, which equates to us for seven hundred and fifty dollars a week for practices. That's unsustainable by any means for any 501(c)(3). So that's for practice field use. We don't have a problem plan for the facilities use. The current rate for facility use, we don't have a problem with that. But the practice to pay two fifty per day, we haven't heard of anybody doing any fees like that or paying. We just want that addressed and some help with that. And some of your feedback would be nice at the conclusion of this. So this creates a clear inconsistency. Organizations like Demon Elite are being required to pay double time. The athletes are legally allowed to use the field. In effect, we are being charged for access that cannot be utilized under SCHL rules. This policy places unnecessary financial burden on nonprofit organizations serving KCSD students, families also contradicting established athletic regulations. We can't even practice kids for more than two hours, but we have to rent the field for a minimum of four hours. So I'm just trying to process that logic, you know, from where I sit as a youth leader, youth organization leader. So Demon Elite has approximately one hundred and thirty student athletes, all of whom are Kershaw County schools. Their families already contribute through property vehicle taxes and many military families, which we have thirty percent of those from Fort Jackson and surrounding areas, whose service bring additional funding into the county through federal impact aid. This creates perception of double taxation. We get asked those questions from families, why are we paying this astronomical amount? We pay taxes here in the county. I can't answer those questions right now. So like I said, this creates a perception of double taxation. The financial burden it has on our organization, Demon Elite is a veteran-owned nonprofit sustained by entirely donations and sponsorship. To offset the cost, yes, we charge a modest interest fee, but the expenses per Saturday event are significant. The facility rental as of now is twelve hundred dollars. Referees for four games are seven fifty. KC's security, the Kershaw County Sheriff's Department, we pay those guys fifty dollars an hour. So it's about four hours, that equates anywhere from two to three hundred dollars depending on if they stay overtime or not. The total being twenty-two hundred dollars. And recently, like I said, by adding the seven fifty per week with the practice facilities, that brings us to three thousand dollars a week to maintain a program, which is not feasible just by charging eight to ten dollars at the gate. What we asking for is equity and fairness in the fee reductions. We were told by KCSD Facilities Manager that because we charge a fee to play, the KCSD School Board recommends that Demon Elite not be eligible for reduced fees. However, upon reviewing the facility requests from the past three years, we found local churches receive discounts up to seventy percent for classroom use despite charging a few fees for their events. Additionally, other travel sports team in the area are not held to the same standards as far as having visiting teams, showing proof of insurance, visiting teams. Yeah, so proof of insurance, us having proof of insurance ahead of time, which we have all that stuff in place. We have to have the facilities in advance, pay in advance before we use the facilities. We never done that before in the last three years. However, this year it has changed for some reason. So like I said, in addition to that, right, the community impact. Demon Elite enforces a no grades, no play policy resulting in higher academic performance and attendance. We host, we actually have a Kershaw County Demon Elite Day here in the county. You guys are probably not aware of, actually winning two state championships our second year out the gate. Last year, twenty-four. So we pride ourselves, we pride us that we are the Ivy League of youth football. We have no incidents. I wish one of the Kershaw County deputies were here that support us at our events. They'd rather do our games than any other game in the state. So we do have a reputation if you have not heard about us. We respectfully ask KCSD School Board to provide equitable access to KC facilities, rates consistent with other community organizations, and recognize the unique service that we provide in the community. And my closing is, we are not here to throw any organization under the bus, any churches. The leadership, however, we are asking that things be equal. We are not asking for special treatment, only equal opportunity. We're open to partnership with the Recreation Department, whatever that looks like. We're open to it. However, they can charge the fees, they can take over the payments. I'd be gladly to offset that as long as our kids have a place to practice and play. That's what we asking for. With that, I yield my remaining of my time.
Thank you.
I'm so sorry, Ms. Karen.
Ms. Latonya. Instead. School practice.
This is my daughter. If we're allowed to speak together, I would be greatly appreciative.
Yes, you have five minutes.
I'd say good evening first to the board members. My name is Karen Robinson, and I'm here as a grandparent and a parent and a tax-paying citizen for Elgin. I've been in Elgin since January tenth of two thousand and ten. I am here, and my children and grandchildren are here, because my husband is from Rembert, South Carolina. But we wanted another small-town area, and Elgin was up and growing. So basically, I'm here so we can be treated fairly. I'm here because the children on Demon Elite, I feel, are not being treated fairly. Demon Elite has been denied access to county parks, school fields, stadiums, and athletic spaces that our tax dollars fund. While other leagues and programs are permitted to use these same facilities without issues, I have seen it myself. The explanations we receive are inconsistent, ever-changing, and seem to apply only to our organization. This is inequitable and is unacceptable. Let me be clear, I'm not asking for special treatment. I'm just asking for equal access. I want to explain something. My father will be ninety-six in March. He lived through the civil rights movement. I witnessed that fight firsthand. As he fought for fairness and opportunity and dignity for his children, I'm the youngest. I see now that in two thousand and twenty-five, I find myself fighting for those same principles, but for my children and grandchildren. I have another child back there. I have an adopted daughter back there whose children also play for Demon Elite. And this Demon Elite has changed their lives immensely. I don't want to let another generation grow up facing subtle barriers and favoritism and exclusions disguised as policy. Not in this county, not in Elgin, not in Lugoff, not in Kershaw, not for our kids. Kershaw has dozens of baseball fields and more being built right now. Yet there are no dedicated youth football, track, volleyball, other sports for these kids or facilities for these kids to use or even for community use. Despite the large number of children involved in these sports, then balance hurts families and real opportunities for these children in Kershaw County. Our athletes, and I'm talking all athletes, deserve the same access to safe, reliable practice spaces as every other child in this county. What concerns many of us is that this decision affecting our youth are often appear to be influenced by personal discretion rather than clear, consistent policy. When the rules shift depending on who is asking, that's not fairness, that's gatekeeping. Tonight, I am asking the board to clarify school facility use policies and apply them equally to all youth organizations. Review the pattern of inconsistency decision-making that has impacted not only Demon Elite, but my children, my grandchildren, and my future. Develop a clear, actionable plan that ensures youth football and track and other sports are consistent access, they have to have it. For school facilities, y'all need to be able to practice there also. We are a vessel in a vein. Thank you.
You have a minute and a half.
Can you hear me? Oh, sorry. Good evening, members of the board. My name is Tech Sergeant Latoya Grinstead. I'm proudly serving in the United States Air Force for the last twenty-two years. I also serve this nation as an employee of the Department of Veteran Affairs for the last nine years. I'm here tonight as a parent, a military member, a government employee, and a tax-paying citizen of Elgin. We moved here in two thousand and twenty, October two thousand and twenty, and we've been home to Elgin, and I love it. I love the community here. I'd like to express the unfortunate unfairness towards my children that need to be addressed. My nephew and all the other kids that I call my babies on Demon Elite. They are part of the Demon Elite League, which has repeatedly been denied access to county parks, school fields, and athletic facilities that our tax dollars fund while other leagues use these very same spaces without issue. I know that firsthand when my family first moved to Elgin community. My children began participating athletics at Jeep Rogers YMCA, but eventually they aged out. Demon Elite filled that gap and kept them active, trained, supervised, and supported. Additionally, they have encouraged us to play rec basketball in the offseason. My daughter has made the KC Junior Varsity Club volleyball. They participate in school sports as well over at Stover Middle School and Lugoff-Elgin High School. That's wrestling, basketball, volleyball, football. I have had a clear view of how school and county facilities are used. I fill out the impact aid form every year for each one of my children and list all of them on all the forms. I have seen the inconsistent, the consistent unfairness directed toward Demon Elite, a league with a strong population of military and government affiliated families, many of who serve this country and this community every single day. As a military parent, I also want to highlight this. Kershaw County School District receives federal impact aid specifically because of students from military families and those that are employed on federal facilities. In two thousand and twenty-three to two thousand and twenty-four school year, the district received four point three eight million in federal revenue, a portion which includes aid connected to military-connected students. If our military families contribute to those funds, if our service strengthens this community's budget, then our children should not be the ones facing barriers, exclusion, or inconsistent application of policy. All we're asking for is fairness and equal access. Our children deserve to play, train, and compete on the fields their families help support, just like every other child in Kershaw County. If our tax dollars fund these facilities, why aren't all of our children allowed to use them? And if fairness truly exists here, why doesn't it reach every child? Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for your service. Chairman's report, I'm going to turn to Dr. King for the South Carolina School Board Association Legislative Advocate Conference Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This past weekend, several of our board members were given the opportunity to attend in Charleston, the annual School Boards Legislative Conference and Delegate Assembly. This is a kind of a whirlwind activity for us. It's very fast. You basically spend all day Saturday delving into the various interests and concerns we may have or may not have with regard to our public school districts in the state. First, we sit as a conglomerate body and listen to a legislative roundtable made up mostly of local legislators from representing throughout the state. One key takeaway I thought when we start talking about funding mechanisms of our school districts is that one legislator brought up the fact that when a major corporation locates to a specific area, it is typically just that area that benefits, even though statewide taxpayer incentives and offsets may happen. A good example of that, as I see, will probably be the Scout Plant that's locating over in Blythewood. But right now, you all know and can very easily attest as to how BMW basically morphed the whole Greenville-Spartanburg area and still does to this day. Something that I hope the legislators will kind of look at with regard to the funding inequities that occur in the state. Next, we did hear from an expert regarding how the budget is assembled for K-12 education, and it is a very convoluted process. We're funded through a mix of local property taxes, that's a major source, state funding like state aid to classrooms, and federal dollars for specific programs, particularly directed toward balancing disparities and serving our disadvantaged students, mostly like Title I specifically. Other initiatives and delving into a new state formula which would simplify funding distribution and increase transparency is always our plea as a conglomerate School Boards Association. Act three eighty-eight is always mentioned in how that places a tax burden on a certain sector. And we always send out a plea to our legislators to keep looking at a better way to fund our state system that's more consistent and serves our whole state rather than having, again, the balance of disparities with the funding mechanism. Notably, though, less than ten percent of funding for schools comes from the federal government. I found that interesting. I guess I thought it was more than that for some reason. And speaking of the federal government, we did have a representative speak about key development and changes in K-12 at the federal level. And as you know, there's currently a dismantling of the Federal Department of Education, talking about transfers of functions within the department, refocus mission of the department, if there continues to be a department, and federal student aid. So things to watch, again, the continued dismantling of the Department of Education at the federal level and how Congress will act with regard to public education and the funding streams and whether or not all that will be relegated back to the states. The main gist of the meeting, though, is the actual delegate assembly, which takes up all of the afternoon. And it has some key points. First of all, we elect the association's leadership for the coming year. We receive an annual report and financial report from the School Boards Association. It's a formal way for school boards to collectively voice their needs and shape advocacy at the state level. And we do focus on issues like funding and student support. And we adopt, through resolutions, we present legislative priorities and statements of belief. We did have a wide range of resolutions that were presented, and they range, as they do every year, from instructional matters, personnel hiring practices, facilities, and of course, funding and more. Delegates were provided an opportunity to voice concerns and ask questions. Notably, districts are, I guess, kind of like Congress, are provided a certain number of delegates based on the enrollment of a specific district. Kershaw County gets four delegates, and fortunately, we did have four representatives of our school board there to vote on the resolutions or not vote on the resolutions. And y'all, I got to tell you, we're blessed. And we say it all often, we don't say it out loud enough, just how well we all work together as a school board in Kershaw County. There was no dissension, or we just group, we just gel when we hear these issues that are presented before. So we do discuss the matters, but as a board, we did all agree unanimously on what we voted on as a school board from Kershaw County. So we then vote again and decide as to which resolutions move forward as an act of Virginia. And these are presented by the School Boards Association to the legislative bodies and delegations and committees that will be convening in the State House next month. So again, it's a hope that our collective voice serves to obtain what's in the best interest of our public schools, specifically our students and staff. So very stimulating, it's a whirlwind of activity. But personally, and I believe my board colleagues who were there will attest, it's very beneficial and serves to help our kids in the best manner possible. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Dr. King. Coach, Ms. Hallie.
I just need to add just a few points to what Charles was talking about, about the legislators that were there. The Honorable Shane Martin was there, and his main concern was school safety. And he said, it doesn't matter where your child goes to school, he or she must be safe. And the main hot-button issue for him for the coming year is who's going to be the next governor. The Honorable Russell Art was also there, public education is a priority. And the main hot-button issue for him was earmarks for individual districts. It needed to be more transparency there. We had those earmarks for districts. The Honorable Neil Collins, he thanked the board for their service, and he also said it changes also good. The Honorable Terry Alexander, educators are the first responders. His main hot-button issue was the budget and the opportunity gap. He said, an educated community is a healthy community. And then we had the opportunity to hear from the South Carolina Education Association President, Deana Cruz, and she brought forth these points. She supports professionals, she supports, the organization supports reduction in class sizes, emotional supports of students, taxes, and also school discipline. Ryan Bailey from SCASA, he brought a point about the Educational Trust Fund. And he said, local boards and county councils need to have a seat at the table when we're discussing the Philos. And we heard from Ian Hedley, he's the Deputy Superintendent of Education. His main focus was safety, infrastructure grant. And then finally, we heard from Patrick Kelly from the Palmetto State Teachers Association, and he brought forth four different points. Educators' working conditions, school safety, compensation and benefits. And he also talked about, and they support this, the persistent disruptive behavior that may go in our classroom. We had the opportunity, as Charles has already said, our new School Board Association President for two thousand and twenty-six is Tim Rose, and he represents Abbeville County School District. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to go. It was a whirlwind of activities, but it was well worth the time that was spent. And I thank the board for giving me the opportunity to go.
I just want to agree with everything that Dr. King and Ms. Hallie said. Sunday morning, we had the, what they call the Great School Board Debate. And I thought the topics were quite interesting. One of the topics that they debated, they had Team A and then Team B, and of course, they were all on stage. So they debated back and forth with each other a little bit. And I thought the topics were really interesting because one of the topics was, should this school personnel be allowed to be armed on campus? And I thought to myself a little bit when they was talking about that, going back and forth, where we going with this in this time of educational careers? And I thought, it was kind of funny, I thought, when I was growing up and we had a paddle and a belt, and that was my resource officer. And then now we into resource officers, and of course, we do protect our schools as, I think, second to nobody. But it was a pretty good debate back and forth, and they were prepared with these questions. And then the other was, should charter schools, homeschools, and governor's school students have access to our programs, which means extracurricular programs and activity programs, excuse me. And, you know, and that's something that's ongoing. High school league representative was there, and it's going to be pursued that they're going to have access to our facilities and activities even at their homeschool. So it's going to happen, I find there's no doubt about it. And I don't know if the legislature would take over the high school league or not, but eventually it's proceeding forward where they're going. Not only that, they're going to be able to access money that we normally would have for our students. And that was just debated back and forth of what it should be done and what will be done. The last topic that was interesting to me was, should school boards be partisan? School board members be partisan? And, you know, the thing about that is that you're dealing with politics, and then you're going to be getting on which side you stand on about politically. And we as a board, I thought of our board, and I said to myself as we were talking back and forth, that we will agree to disagree sometimes, but we always come to a solid conclusion with our thoughts. And we don't need to be partisan in any kind of way as far as my opinion, as they were discussing that. Which team won as far as Team A and Team B? I really couldn't tell you because they were prepared for the questions, and they had very good answers on either side. So they had reasons for their questions, how they wanted to interpret the questions, answer the questions and so forth. So it was really interesting, but some of the things, these topics that I just mentioned, it's pretty serious topics about things that's going to be taking place, and I think it's in the future. We'll just have to be looking out for it as we go on. But thank you for letting me go, and I enjoyed the time I spent with high school board members there. And I have good leadership in our chairman. We did, obviously, on the advocacy meeting, there were some long discussions. And it took some time, but we got it done, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Coach. All right, thank you. Superintendent Finesse, Mr.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Dr. Goodwin, members of the board, good evening. Before we get into the October review, I just wanted to give you a quick update regarding the audit as we met last month. And Mr. Finney brought the audit draft results to you. As you remember, we were in a position where it was in draft format, and we were not able to finalize the audit by December first as normal. But just wanted to report as of last week, the federal government, the OMB, has released the supplement, the Audit Supplement Guide. So we are now in a position where we can finish that up, and I've been discussing with the auditors, and they're working on closing that out and wrapping up. So we'll be able to submit that soon, and right now, we don't foresee any changes. So for the October review, just a reminder, again, as Mr. Finney had mentioned last month, that at this time, we have gone since the beginning of the year without a lot of local tax dollars. We've been, you know, living on the state dollars that are coming in and the federal dollars that we've been able to claim. So we're just now entering that time of the year where we're getting our annual local tax collections to start. And we'll be getting the bulk of those from now through the end of January into early or mid February. of January into early or mid-February. So as we look at the dashboard, take a look at the general fund balance, that 21.6 million, almost 21.7, that has been updated per the audit draft. So we've got that, that slide part updated with the FY '25 result. The ADM, the Average Daily Membership, you will see where that being reported for '25, '26, at the 10-day, and now we've added the 45th day. You can't see it in there, but there was a little bit of change from the 10th day to 45th day to the positive. We did add some students during that time, but you will see that we are certainly impacted by reduction in enrollment this year, and not sure what that means for our funding as of yet, because that is yet to adjust within the calculation. And I'm sure you guys heard some about that at the, at the conference. Cash balances and sales tax are as expected this time of year, so we will go over and look at the monthly schedule summary for the revenue and expenditures. Just a couple of things to highlight. So talking about the local ad valorem delinquent taxes that have been collected, you'll see that we are better than we were in the prior year actuals, and we are better than the year-to-date expected there. And that is the case for all local revenue in comparison overall. State revenue, those top three lines, which makes up a main portion of our state revenue through general fund, EIA, and then that retiree insurance line, you will see how we compare. We are not where we would expect to be in all of those areas. And there's a couple of reasons for that. One, as you recall, the charter schools have the opportunity to present a 10-day count into the year, and it's, and the funding is immediately adjusted across all districts and charters after that count is there. There is no wait in that game. We have to sustain that immediately. The other thing is, there are a few revenue items. The biggest example is revenue that we get to cover fringe cost, has not been fully updated yet in the calculation, but we expect that to be updated in either the December or January payments. So we hope that that will make a little bit of a difference. But again, we now have to wait and see what the reduced enrollment means for us later in the year. Overall, revenue compared to expenses, we, the comparison is just fine where it is, around 4.2 million to the negative in the prior year, and at the same time, negative 4.9 million this year. So that is a good comparison in where we would expect to be this time of year, based on our budget and the lack of local tax collections. So the general fund expenditures on the next slide, overall, you can see that we have used about 28% of our budgeted expenditure lines this year. That compares favorably to an ideal percentage of 33%, so we are in good shape there overall. And we'll, you know, we continue to highlight those that we have spent beyond budget or beyond expectations at this time for things like technical professional services. We've talked about those, but as far as our miscellaneous needs for technology and supplies, we always have to front end those, so those percentage of uses are going to be higher. Look at the special fund summary, and taking these individually, the special revenue, although the, the processing of the federal grants has been slow, what we see is we're, we're maintaining a, an appropriate ratio between revenues and expenses there. So the state revenue we have coming in on allocations, as well as the money we spend on federal programs that we have to then claim, we're keeping a good ratio with 6.3 in revenue and 7.1, almost 7.2 in expenses. That's okay. That's where we would expect to be. Debt service, we are currently in a, what I call, the period of collections. We have made a couple of small payments early in the year, but we are collecting our sales tax now in preparation for larger payments that will come in the year, but that is favorable revenue and expenses when comparing those two now. And activity funds, all good activity for the month of October, which is represented on the next chart. And the receipts and dispersments there, you'll see that that's, that's some very balanced activity within our student activity funds, and that translates overall when you look at the ending balances by location. Rental account, I will really not stop there and go over that. We'd just like to give you that cumulative activity based on things that you do consider when we meet for financing facilities. Food service, community eligibility result for the month of October. As you can see, we're holding steady on our, both our lunch and our breakfast percentages, and we, we hope to continue maintaining those, but that program is running in very good shape. And we'll not go into any detail on the appendix pages for the expenditure detail, but just I will reiterate, in those areas where we have expended ahead of our projections, that is to be expected at this time. So that concludes the report for October, and be happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you all.
That motion to go into executive session to discuss resignation, retirement of certified and classified personnel, employment of certified and classified personnel, assignment changes and transfer of certified and classified personnel. Proper motion by Coach Blackman, second by Mr. Roberts. All in favor, let it be known by Senate Aye.
Aye.
Your question is, how many people do you have in your department? And I'm asking you to answer with the right answer. You know, you have a lot of people in your department who work for you. And you have a lot of people that work for you personally. So I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer with the right answer. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question. Do you have a department that works for you personally? And I want you to answer this question.
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Yes.
On the guidance of our district attorneys, I'd like to make a motion to begin the Kershaw County School District Board meetings with an opening invocation that does not advance, prefer, or disparage any one faith, belief, or creed. Specifically, I move our board select from the invocations offered by the South Carolina General Assembly. Invocations shall be non-sectarian and follow the process of Section 6-1-160 of South Carolina law.
Motion is properly before, so it's second. Second by Ms. Furnas. All those in favor, let me know by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, and that's unanimous. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So.
Motion properly made by Dr. King, second by Ms. Runlet. All those in favor, let me know by saying aye. Those opposed, and we adjourn.
Thank you.